Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our October City Council meeting. But prior to getting going, we've got a couple of things that we're gonna do. We've got some proclamations and a couple of very important ones. And Karina, I want you to step up and kind of tell us what's going on on National Coming Out Day.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm Karina Sanchez. I'm the Human Rights Investigator at the City Civil and Human Rights Department. I'm the temporary liaison for the LGBTQAC Advisory Council. So on behalf of them, we're recognizing that National Coming Out Day is October 11th. And every single year, they have an annual event where we have a lot of the community come out, and the Advisory Council members are also present. And it's really a day of awareness and a lot of gathering, sharing the LGBTQAC difficulties and things that they've experienced over the decades to get to where they are today. And so October 11th next week at 5:30 PM at Ritual Cafe is where the National Coming Out Day event will be. So you're all welcome to attend. It is a public event. And on behalf of the Advisory Council, we really thank the mayor and the community and council for their continuous support, and we can't wait to keep doing this. So, thank you.
Stay right up here with me here. So our proclamation quickly reads as follows. National Coming Out Day began in 1988 as an annual internationally observed celebration for those lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people, LGBTQ, who have had the courage to be proud of who they are and to fight for equal rights. And Des Moines is committed to being inclusive and championing the vibrancy of its diversity. Equality for all residents of the city of Des Moines, including those who are LGBTQ, is intrinsic to the values of our community. The city of Des Moines encourages all residents to be their full selves and to embrace all that they are. And the city of Des Moines joins the international community in celebrating National Coming Out Day. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim October 11th as National Coming Out Day. In the city of Des Moines, we encourage our residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. What's that? Come on up, Marshall. Bring the whole crew. We've got to balance it out. Come on. Are you gonna do, tell everybody what we're doing here? Go ahead.
So next week is Fire Prevention Week. We will have several activities with the Des Moines Public Libraries and other activities. We're gonna do some fire extinguisher training. We'll be in several schools. Very important week to remember every year about why we need to be proactive in preventing fires. This year's theme is focused on kitchen fire safety, which is still the number one cause of fires, both nationally and in Des Moines. And then we have a special guest with us today that we wanted to introduce to everybody. Yahtzee is the newest member of our department. Yahtzee is a hydrocarbon detection canine, and he works with Captain Eric Huntune, who's his handler. And we want to take an opportunity to introduce Yahtzee to the council and the mayor and everybody else.
End of the city. Holy smoke.
Together, they have several hundred hours of training, but they are nationally certified as a team together. So that adds a capacity to our department that we haven't had before. And they've already worked several fire scenes. And Yahtzee is trained to basically detect where there may have been accelerants used in the setting of the fire, and has been out on several scenes and has been instrumental in the investigation portion of that process for our department. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, and thank you for the introduction of the newest member of the team here. All right. The proclamation reads as follows. The city of Des Moines is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the city. According to the U.S. Fire Administration, home fires caused 1,517 civilian deaths in the United States since the beginning of this year. And the Des Moines Fire Department responded to 818 total fires in 2022. And fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes and the locations where residents are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of house fires resulting in more than 166,404 home fires annually. Holy smokes. Does that mean we should eat out more and not? And two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fire resulting from unattended cooking. And the women and men in the Des Moines Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires and fires injuries through the prevention and education. Whereas in 2023, Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safely Starts With You. Pay attention to the fire prevention effectively to serve our residents of Des Moines and guests to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our residents, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th to the 14th of 2023 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Des Moines. And I call upon all of our residents to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices. And I encourage attending the many public safety activities and efforts of the Des Moines Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week. Thank you all for everything that you do, and look forward to even more work from your newest member. Tighten up, tighten up, Paul. He's laying down on the dock. All right. All those that are here for the presentation of our Italian heritage, come on up. Joe, let's put her over here. Come on over here. Yeah. I'm good, how are you? You wanna do some talking? Who's gonna do the talk?
You wanna talk? Please. Thanks. You can. I stop you when you need.
You know, Paolo, when I get a microphone, I'm dangerous. I just want to tell you that we're very proud here in Des Moines right now. Our new location is about 22, 33, 23. You see, I haven't been there very often. 2633 Flewer Drive. And we're gonna bring to you an Italian Heritage Museum and a place for all of your venues that you've never seen anything the like of, okay? This is Paolo Bartasaghi. He is president of our Italian American Heritage Center of Iowa. This is Trish Rudden, and she is chairman of our Heritage Advisory Board right now. And that's it. Oh, I'm Patricia Civitati. I'm old.
Mrs. C, did I was done. I got you.
So you're gonna be 69 tomorrow?
Yeah, right.
Fifty-five. She's with me.
All right. I'm gonna make a couple of corrections on the fly here. This proclamation for Italian Heritage Month starts as in, I think we mean 1492, not 1942? Okay. So in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue. Sorry. At any rate, Christopher Columbus, a man of Italian heritage, made his first voyage to America. And whereas the first Columbus Day celebration was held in 1792 in New York City, the 300th anniversary of the Italian man's landing in America. And President Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed Columbus Day as a national holiday, and to this date, it is the only day on which all Pan-Americans join in celebrating. And whereas Columbus Day is a federal holiday throughout the United States, and this year will be observed October 9th of 2023 with a celebration at the Italian American Heritage Center. Italian American Heritage Month will be celebrated throughout the city during October. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of October of 2023 is Italian Heritage Month in honor of all Italian Americans in the city of Des Moines and across the country. Let's give them a great big hand, and I'm gonna let you. You're in charge. You got a point.
You gotta come this way. She's not moving. You guys move to her.
You betcha. Uh-huh. No, no. You've got a lot more to go, girl. Come on. All right. We had one more. We were hoping that we had a staff member here, but do you want to come up and be part Any rate, Emily's here. She's constantly helping us and helping Jeremy and work on everything that we're doing in and around the city regarding energy efficiency in our buildings and even given the new animal facility and greenhouse that are gonna be solar powered. So we're trying to look at how we do things in this century and how we should set an example moving forward. And so she's sort of in charge of keeping us pointed in the right direction. She's right about that, too. All right. Energy efficiency continues to be the cheapest, quickest, and cleanest way to meet our energy needs and reduce utility bills for residents, commercial, and industrial business sectors in and around Des Moines. Implementing energy efficiency and other clean energy programs can boost economic opportunity and job creation while continuing to move Des Moines toward a sustainable future. Energy efficiency can accelerate progress towards our emission reduction goals while making homes and workplaces healthier, safer, and more comfortable. And the city of Des Moines became a national leader in setting ambitious climate goals while approving plans to achieve 100% 24/7 carbon-free electricity by 2035, and renewing our city's commitment to meeting our fair share of emissions reduction through science-based targets established by ICLI's Race to Zero. And whereas a nationwide network of energy efficiency groups and partners have designated the first Wednesday in October as National Energy Efficiency Day. And whereas together, we can contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in our daily lives. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim October 4th, 2023 as Energy Efficiency Day, and I urge our residents to learn more and join in support of clean energy goals of moving towards more energy efficiency now and in the future. Emily, thank you for your work. Let's get a quick picture. Oh, yeah, here we are. And I'll say to all of our staff and everybody else, and a lot of the businesses and others that have contributed to it, I mean, we've got Lead Platinum Buildings around this city, not only that are owned and operated by the city of Des Moines, but we've got our old library across the bridge here that's a Lead Platinum Building that's over 100 years old. And we made the conversion and got not only accepted by the historical folks, but also by the United States Green Building Council. And we have one of our corporate partners in Des Moines who actually, when they opened the Wellmark Building in downtown Des Moines as their new headquarters, was the largest Lead Platinum Building, single owner, single-occupied building in the world. Think of that, in Des Moines, Iowa. Let's keep working. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Des Moines City Council meeting. Sorry, our presentations and our proclamations took five minutes longer than I had presumed. But here we are, October 2nd, and let's call our meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bowzen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 63, and those are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council member requests an item to be removed. Just for that this evening, I'm gonna vote no on item 5, and item 13D, Councilmember Gatto is going to abstain.
Move approval.
A second.
All right. I'll ask everybody to vote, please. Been moved and seconded. All right. I will note also that there was a, item 36 was corrected. It was an update on 1525 High Street Snell LLC. Edward Massman is the officer. And 44 was corrected. It was an updated roll call. And there was a Class C liquor license for RRAKSS Fine Dining and Bistro at 401 East Court Avenue 3. It's a, that was added, but it is gonna be approved pending their building and zoning department approval. So we'll go ahead and move forward and go straight to item 64. This is our first hearing item, item 64. Just to quickly go over the rules, for the eight hearings this evening, we have one zoning hearing, which is item 70, one vacation hearing, and three conveyance hearings, two license hearings, and one public improvement authorization hearing. As a reminder, for the zoning item only, of which there is that one, number 70, we will hear from the parties in interest first. And the parties in interest are generally speaking, the applicant and anyone within 250 feet that has received notice from the city that would want to comment on that. After all, the parties in interest have commented. We're gonna open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. And to aid in recognizing the parties in interest who may wish to speak this evening, I will ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless they are one of those parties in interest. And anyone who approaches it and before their time will be compared with the mailed list. And if you're not on the list, you'll be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So please, just wait until I call on the general public for the zoning item. After all, the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called upon for germane public comments, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner, either for failure to be germane or public comments come to an end. For the public improvement authorization hearing this evening, any interested person may make general germane comments, and not to exceed one minute per person. With a comment ceases and will be ended sooner if there's lack of germane comments or the public conversation or comments cease. For all the other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, and not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner. So let's go ahead and get started. Item 64 is our first hearing item on its own vacation of a portion of East 16th Street Right Of Way and Conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment to George M. Clayton for $550. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And we'll quickly open it up for comments germane to this issue from the general public. Anyone want to speak? Seeing none?
Seeing none, Your Honor. I'll move 64, 64A, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I will waive the second and third reading.
Been moved and seconded, ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 65 is on a conveyance of a permanent easement for ingress and egress in a portion of vacated 41st Street Right Of Way located east of and adjoining 54542 Street to Plymouth Congregational Church of the United Church of Christ. Again, let's open it up and see if there's any general comments from the public on this
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 65.
A second.
All right. Item 65 has been moved and seconded. Again, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 66, on a conveyance of excess city property located south of and adjoining 2720 Garden Road to Herd Garden LLC for $23,300. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 66.
Item 66 is moved and seconded. Item 67 is on the conveyance of 4130 Columbia Street to RM Madden Construction, Inc., for rehabilitation of housing. Council communication number 23-442. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public.
Hi, Garland Armstrong, on the east side of Ward 2. For this one right here, I hope this one will be for people with special needs and for seniors, too, because I hope they have an elevator in there or ramp, because there are some who don't have good balance, and I hope they're working on this to make sure... sure that this is the right part for them, because they certainly need affordable housing. So, just want to make sure if it's going to be accessible for them and making sure that they have a ramp or an elevator so that, so that they won't be able to have any problems with stairs and something like that. I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments concerned about this.
Scott, you want to have staff afterwards?
I think it's, yeah.
Yeah. Single-family home.
All right, make sure that they have a ramp in there, because sometimes there are some who can't handle stairs, you know? That's the most important of all, because they could either fall or be injured, so that's the most important of all.
I think we'll try to meet the needs of the resident that takes over that place. So, good point.
Thanks.
All right. We need a motion? 67 is moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 68 is on a license agreement with Brittany Ann Lynn Baharos Lakos for the use of a portion of undeveloped Arthur Avenue Right Of Way located south of and adjoining 2503 East 24th Street. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public.
Hello, and thank you. And no apologies on my last name, it's, I get it all the time. So I am actually Brittany, and I am the homeowner of the adjacent lot next to it, and I am looking just basically to extend out my property onto this undeveloped land. It does get frequently used by passerbyers, walkers, or people driving through. I do have a family size of eight, so that means six children, and I'm just looking out for their safety. Just want to make sure that I can basically just kind of utilize that without having worries or concerns of anyone coming around the corner, around the fence, or the house, or anything like that. So just looking to be able to utilize that space, because I already graciously maintain it, take care of it as if it's my own. I just want to be able to say that it's mine to be able to have my kids play on it with no concern, so that's all I have.
All right, seeing no one else, do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Let's give everyone a vote.
Six yes.
Item 69 is on a license agreement with 113 Southwest 8th Street LLC for the use of a portion of Vine Street Right Of Way located between Southwest 7th Street and Southwest 8th Street. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 69.
Second.
69 moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 70, sent a request from WAH2 LTD Cynthia Steele Bishop is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to medium-density residential and rezone 5631 Francis Avenue from N3B Neighborhood District to limited NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow for the expansion of a parking lot for the existing group living assisted living facility use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Again, let's open it up. Are there any parties in interest here to speak? We'll ask, is the applicant here? And do they want to speak? All right, is there any other parties in interest, those within 250 feet that have gotten notice? All right, let's open it up, see if the general public has any germane comments regarding this particular zoning request. Seeing none? Counsel?
I'll move items 70A and B.
Second.
Six yes.
Item 71 is on the intent to commence a public improvement project to construct East Army Post Road Trunk Sewer Project and to authorize acquisition of the necessary property interests, including agricultural land for the project. Council communication number 23-436. Will ask if any interested person would like to make a comment on this one regarding a public improvement Army Post Trunk Sewer.
Lamar Cothe, 35, 1442nd Street in Urbandale. I recommend that, I think this is a great improvement that the city is making, and I think it's going to bring a lot of tax base and be a very good thing for the city. Any questions?
I'll move item 71, Your Honor.
71 has been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
All right, let's note that the hearing items ended at 5:20. This is under the approving section. This is a request from Wade Investments LLC for a certificate of appropriateness to allow construction of a new mixed-use building on the west portion of the property occupied by Norden Hall Local Landmark at 425 East Grand Avenue. Counsel, any thoughts or discussion?
Second.
Six yes.
Item 73, this is on a request from the Diocese of Des Moines for a certificate of appropriateness to allow installation of rooftop mechanical equipment with no mechanical screening on the American Federal Building Local Landmark at 601 Grand Avenue. Counsel, any thoughts on this one?
Second.
Six yes.
Item 74, sent a request from Riva Walters, who's the owner, represented by Jennifer DeCoke, as legal counsel for the filing. Council communication number 23-430. A, consideration of an extension of time in which to file an appeal of a conditional approval of a certificate of appropriateness on property located at 685 20th Street. We have two alternatives. One is to extend the deadline, or two, decline to extend the deadline. B, only consider if A1 is approved, setting a date of hearing on an appeal of a conditional approval of certificate of appropriateness on a property located at 685 20th Street for the construction of a fence in the front yard, and that would be for October 23rd of 23. Counsel, any thoughts?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 74A1 and B.
Second.
All right.
Six yes.
All right, item 75 is amending section 2-62 relating to the salary of the mayor and the council members, amending section 2-112 relating to council attendance by adding section 2-113 relating to the determination of sanction and renumbering section 2-112 to section 2-114. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the city attorney and requires six votes. Counsel, any thoughts or discussion here?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move 75 and 75A.
I'll second.
Obviously, it's unfortunate what happened in the past, and we need, definitely, if you don't come to work, you don't get paid, and that's pretty simple.
I second it, so I don't know if you got that.
Yep.
Six yes.
Item 76, amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council communication number 23-432 is a corner clearance parking restriction. One is East 37th Street and Indianapolis Avenue. Two is 40th Place and Crocker Street. Three is East 42nd Street and Wilson Avenue. Four is 61st Street and Walnut Hill Drive. Five is Clark Street and 31st Street. Six is Natch Drive and Stephenson Way. Counsel, any thoughts on this?
I'll move approval of 76A, 76 and 76A. One, two, three, four, five, and six.
You want to?
And I'll waive the second, the pursuant to 42A.
Second and third reading.
Second and third.
Six yes.
All right, we've got a public speaking coming up, and we've got five speakers this evening. For those persons wishing to speak this evening, under the public speaking item on the agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized to speak. Each of the five speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes each to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the end of your two minutes, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we'll move on immediately to the next speaker. We want to hear from all of our residents, and we encourage all of our residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that may have some opinions different from their own. But let's get started. Our first speaker this evening is Lori Ann Young.
Good evening, ooh, that's loud. Good evening, Councilor Mayor County. I'm Lori Young, Ward 1, and a member of CCI's racial justice team. Most of you are busy campaigning right now for election as mayor or for the retention of your seat on the council. But with the political divisions in our country, several major labor strikes, out-of-control inflation, and the government shutdown looming, people are really struggling financially and mentally. Our elected leaders need to just do the right thing when it comes to one thing, and that's racial justice in policing. I've lived in Des Moines all my life, and I've invested much in this city, but the issues I've been advocating for since 2016 are still important to me and still unsolved. I'm talking about accountability, transparency, better data, and civilian oversight of policing. Make no mistake, public safety reform is on the ballot. My hope is that the new makeup of the city council will be rooted in compassionate power, integrity, and justice. We expect the new council of January 2024 to move with urgency into the future. It's time to refresh, renew, and reset. As you share your views and plans for public safety reform on the campaign trail, please be honest with Des Moines voters. And should you win, remember we will hold you accountable to your campaign promises. Let me remind you of three simple but powerful facts in closing. Number one, a person's skin color is not reasonable suspicion. Racially biased policing is still going on in Des Moines. If you want the latest data through 2022, talk to me after the meeting. Number two, and this should be obvious, but police cannot police themselves. And number three, you are accountable to us, your constituents. We've made some good progress, but only with the community's undying persistence and hard work. Counsel, is it really that hard to just do the right thing? Thanks.
All right, our next speaker is Adam Kellin.
Hello, Adam Kellin, Ward 3. Three points today. The first is that council needs to offer hybrid virtual participation in public meetings. When a portion of the public are intentionally excluded from meetings, the city fails to offer basic equity. Second is that speaking rules also need to be modified and loosened. People should be able to speak without running up against arbitrary rules. Arbitrary rules are not equitable, and the public comment should be allowed on all items, not just specific hearing items. People should be able to give comments, and y'all can vote whatever way you want, but I don't understand why you aren't willing to listen to people's viewpoints on items that you think are controversial. Also wanted to talk about news recently broke, that this will be the last year of Planned Parenthood's annual book sale fundraiser. This is apparently due to the city taking Planned Parenthood's property through eminent domain. The city should have worked with Planned Parenthood to, if necessary, take the property without ending the fundraiser. City has a lot of funding they could use to help. Note that council recently refused to not protect reproductive rights locally after the repeal of Roe, and now is directly harming reproductive rights locally through the ending of this fundraiser. Thank you.
Carrie Gosnell.
Carrie Gosnell, Ward 3, a member of CCI's racial justice team and DSM surge. Mayor County, I read your letter to the Des Moines residents in the last couple of weeks. It seemed like a reaction on what you felt you accomplished in the last 20 years. You referenced national rankings, naming Des Moines the best place to live and work as evidence of your accomplishments. Yet there are other rankings that you did not mention. 247 Wall Street has named Des Moines among the worst cities in the country for African-Americans multiple times in the last eight years, quoting concerns with disproportionately high unemployment, low homeownership, and low educational attainment rates. In 2007, the sentencing project rated Iowa the worst state in the country for disproportionately incarcerating black residents at 13 times more likely than white residents. In 2013, an ACLU national study ranked Iowa dead last in the nation in racial disparities from marijuana possession, with black people being eight times more likely to be arrested than a white person. So while it feels great to have rankings that say Des Moines is the best place to live, we also need to remember that those rankings are based on a primarily white experience. I wish that your letter included real change after hearing community members share their racially biased policing stories. I wish that you wrote about implementing the recommendations of marijuana task force and seeing reduced rates of marijuana possession offenders in our jails. I wish that you wrote about all of the changes you sent into motion to hold our police accountable to the highest standards of policing and are passing on the baton to the next person to do the job. But you avoided the subject completely. Look, I am thankful for all who serve, and I have witnessed the city change over the last 20 years also. I just wish that it was the best place for our black residents to live and work too. And I'm hopeful that the next mayor and any new council members will be willing to work with the community to attack these issues head-on.
D'Artagnan Brown.
Good afternoon, council members. Bozen, Mandelbaum, Gatto, Mayor County, Connie, Westergaard, Carl Voss. I'm D'Artagnan Brown, from Ward 2, born behind the red line. I'm thinking all of us, though, have been through a lot in the years since you were last elected, Frank. As you step down, I pray that the rest of you will move forward with integrity, with an eye toward constructing an even more equitable and welcoming city. To that end, we at CCI will continue to urge this body to widen discussions concerning 21st Century Report on the review of the DMPP, data collection, and transparency, and a Community Review Board, CRB. As I think about the upcoming elections, my hope is that the new configuration of the city council will be rooted in compassionate power, integrity, and justice. The new council of January 2024 should be future-focused. In fact, these words come to mind when I think about the council's future. 21st Century Report, the review of the DMPP, data collection, transparency, and the Community Review Board, CRB. and the community review board, CRB. Since this is one of the last times for this particular iteration of the city council, I'd like to suggest that the two-minute mic cutoff be scrapped and that the virtual access to these proceedings be restored. When earnest public speakers have their mics cut off in mid-sentence, it creates the impression of disregard for urgent citizen concerns. There is a tension between the need to keep a community safe and the exploitive act of a stop-and-sniff-type stop. Since these situations are by nature not in general public view, there's a great temptation by law enforcement to take the type of actions that damage community trust and often do disproportionate harm to the human being detained on suspicion. The act of data collection and the intended transparency of reporting will enable the community to judge more accurately the weight to give to factors, including the officer's instinct. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Frank.
Jolene Prescott.
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 30133rd Street in Des Moines, Iowa. Since our last meeting, some things have happened. Officer Kevin Crabb is shot while, while taking an arrest warrant in Algonah. And then, a few days later, a Polk County deputy is shot at during a traffic stop. Law enforcement is a dangerous profession. And I think we need to continue to support our law enforcement officers with materials and training. They need to cope to keep both themselves and others safe. I guess I don't want to see again a council member who just summarily votes no on a police item just because the police are mentioned in it. We need to really think about that and know, and continue to fund our police, because they're important. And I want to thank all the officers in the Des Moines Police Department for their service, because it's a dangerous job. And I don't know if I'd want to do it, would you? It's scary. But it takes a special people to do it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move item 77A3E and receiving file.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Everybody vote.
Six, yes.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
All right. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate your input and participation.